Hello?
We are gonna start the meeting right now. We have quorum. Let's just, okay? Alright, so. I would like to call this meeting to order. Today is September third, twenty twenty four, and this is our first meeting of the legislative year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Alright, so roll called Jared Stoffus.
I'm here.
Luke?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Val? Valerie Skin is on her way. Alright, perfect. Jerry, can you lead us on the pledge allegiance, please?
Yep, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Constance Ruberal says she's writing, she's having a little bit of technical difficulties, but she's gonna be joining us soon. Okay? Alright, so item number two. Review of the agenda. Jerry, can you go down the list, please?
Uh, yes, number one, uh, call order, sorry. Call to order and pledge of allegiance. Number two, review of the agenda. Number three. Sorry, number two, review the agenda. The mayor and council review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest for discussion. Number three, mayor and council members events announcements. Number four, presentation and discussion on building applications for forty-three oh three thirtieth street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two zero seven one two. And forty-three ten thirtieth street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two zero seven one two. Number five, public comment. Then under old business. Number six, for appointment of Miss Stephanie Schlessinger. I'm sorry, folks, if I get your names wrong, Schlessinger. Co-chair, Miss Emily Bird, co-chair and grant reviewer, Miss Bethany Van Campen Saravia. Miss Tracy Misserv. And appointment of Miss Megan Haber to the recreation committee. Number seven, discussion on vice mayor rotation. Number eight, first reading of resolution number two dash twenty twenty four proclaiming. I'm sorry, folks, proclaiming February is Black History Month. Number nine, first reading of resolution number three dash twenty twenty four reproductive rights or human rights. Uh, number ten, discussion approval of reimbursement for teacher appreciation event at Thomas Stone Elementary School. Number eleven, presentation of minutes. Um, the city clerk will present the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four special legislative meeting, public hearing and work session minutes to mayor and council. And number twelve, vote on approval of minutes. Mayor and council will vote on approving the minutes for June fourth, twenty twenty four legislative meeting. And number thirteen, adjournment.
Thank you so much. Valerie has joined us, so thank you, Valerie. And I did let them know that you were having a little bit of technical difficulties. So we are, is there anything you guys wish to delete from the agenda?
I would, I would like to make one change, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Valerie.
For the recreation committee, I would like to, instead of appointing Tracy Messerv, I'd like to, instead, for the voting members, I'd like to appoint Jenny Hoffpower.
Okay. That is fine. Thank you, Valerie. Any objections? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much. Alright, as we are making the change. Okay, so, as we're making the change, Valerie, I'm gonna rely on you as my vice mayor until we have, you know, until whatever process needs to follow through for the vice mayor resolution, okay? Alright, thank you for that. Okay, so in saying that, do me a favor, Valerie, before we read the announcements. Can you go to the bottom of the agenda, Mellie? So that way, Valerie, can you read the events announcements overall, please?
Yep, so upcoming events, Mount Rainier Day is this coming Saturday, September seventh, twenty twenty four, from eleven AM to five PM, starting at the Mount Rainier Nature Center with a parade. And then we have Latino Heritage Month celebration, September fourteenth, twenty twenty four, from five PM to eight PM, on Bunker Hill Road between thirty-third and thirty-fourth streets, between the city and Joe's Movement Emporium. Public Safety Night is September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty four, from five PM to nine PM at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. And then Porch Fest, Mount Rainier, is September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty four, from four PM to seven PM.
Thank you so much. For the porch fest, please reach the committee, for the safety night chief and his team, and for the other two, City Hall. And if you're in doubt, reach out to City Hall. And they'll get you to the right people. Thank you so much. Alright, moving up, we have announcement from mayor and council. So, Jared, I'm gonna start with you and make my way across. Go ahead.
Um, I have no announcements at this time. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Luke?
I just, the tree commission is meeting tomorrow night at seven thirty. Not tomorrow night, sorry, Thursday night at seven thirty, so just wanna announce that. It's on the city website for anybody who wants to attend. That commission does wonderful work, helping to manage our tree inventory as a city. Thank you.
Um, can you give us a one minute or less review about the arts commission, the events they had this summer, because they were busy? Overall, you have to go into details.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can, I can, I can kinda give a review of what happened. So going back to last spring, the arts commission had a bit of a renaissance. We were able to nominate a few folks at the end of spring, which was great to get the commission back up to kind of full staff. And they went out with a bunch of events this summer to start. One, just making sure folks know about the arts commission. Two, engaging more of the artists in our community with various events throughout the city. So they've been having meetups at different places. If you're signed up to receive city alerts, you would have seen that. And they've done really great work with that in building awareness and I think a little energy around the arts commission as they look to do more projects this year, and thinking about how they wanna set their agenda for the coming year.
Thank you for that. Danielle, and then Valerie.
Yes, this month, CERT meeting will be held on Monday, September twenty-third at seven P, seven thirty PM in the community room of the police department on Rhode Island Avenue. If you're interested or curious of what CERT does, we would like to invite you to attend one of the meetings or sign up for the monthly email by requesting the email, sending a request to cert, that's C E R T, at mountrainiermd.org. Thank you.
Valerie?
Thank you. So a few announcements, and then the recre, first of all, the recreation committee meets on September twelfth at six thirty. They've changed their day of meeting from Wednesdays, the second Wednesdays of every month, to the second Thursdays of every month, to make it better for the schedule for everyone on the committee. So that's, that's happening next week. I wanna remind everybody that kids are back in school, and the schools have changed their start times a little bit. So elementary schools start at seven thirty, and there's a mad dash for parents to get to school, but I, I just wanna remind everyone to take, take it easy around the school so that people are not getting hurt as they get dropped off for school, and that it's safe. And then, yeah, that's it, I think.
That, thank you so much. Okay, so I'll give you guys a rundown, because we definitely have been busy this summer. The council, she takes a bit of recess that allows for the staff to reset for the year. For the fiscal year starts in July first. And also allows them to be able to take some well-deserved break, because once we start in September, we keep them ridiculously busy with everything that we do. So that is part of the reasons why we take a well, well-deserved meeting break. That does not mean that work does not continue going on, as you have partaken in several events that the city has had. We had a very successful back-to-school day, a very successful police department, safety night event. It was a full house, as it always is. And we also participated with our neighbor Scottish City for their one hundred year celebration as an example. And we're gonna continue working alongside, but one of the biggest things that I'm very happy that we did. The National Legal Cities was, is one of the organizations that we have, that we have joined us as of about three years ago that were very much responsible for lobbying the Congress and Senate when it came to ARPA funding. The city got about nine million dollars right before the pandemic, around the pandemic hit, right? And that has allowed for us to build a lot of infrastructure, get scholarships, put money and everything else. And they also, we also joined their infrastructure bootcamp. And that's how we were able to be even more competitive and, and been awarded nine point seven million dollars when it came to the infrastructure projects for SS for All. So just organization alone is close to twenty thousand dollars that we have collaborated with them, along with the Maryland Municipal League, because they're active members, we're active members of both leagues, right? In order to make sure that funding and resources are brought to the city so that way all of our beautiful, wonderful dreams come true. This year, the National Legal Cities turn a hundred years, and they set their goal to visit a hundred cities in the whole entire nation, right? So part of what I did is I put a pitch out to them and said, we would like for you to visit Mount Rainier. And this is the reasons why. And we know it's hundreds of thousands of municipalities, like nationwide. And it's important for you to come here. They had already done Annapolis, Laurel, Greenville, College Parks, a lot of big cities, right? So Frederick, I believe they also did, right? I did participate in Annapolis as an executive board member for the Maryland Municipal League. And, you know, remind them that our application was in, and we would love to have them there. And I'm happy to say that they came last week. And we had a very big group. It was about approximately, the whole group was forty to fifty people combined together. And they had staff from all over the nation. We were one of the tours that they were able to enjoy. And we took them to Memorial Park, the old and the new City Hall. We also, I wanna give a big, big thank you to the PTO and their president, Tim Myers, as well as the school and the principal, Jennifer Till, Ms. Till. Right? We showcased the outdoor classroom work that's being done, as well as how the city has contributed and gave them an opportunity for them to see why do we need safe streets and why we need to continue to allocate for direct funding to municipalities. But also what, some of the things that we had done with the ARPA money. And we have a beautiful poster. They took a poster signed by all of us, right? And a big thank you also to the Maryland Municipal League, because we had Mayor O'Connor, who's the current president of the Maryland Municipal League. We have Mayor Todd Knock, who is the president-elect, who will be president next year from Pocamol City. We also have immediate past president John Carroll from the town of Galena. All three of them show up. And we also had Todd Reynolds representing the administrative side. So we have basically with myself, right? But this is my city, of course I was gonna be here. We had four out of the six. We had all three, the trio of presidents showed up, and some of them were traveling, and now we're a half to two hours and a half to get here. So it's, a lot of it has to do because we have good relationship with them, and we do our best to show up to, I will, you know, to show up to their towns when they have events and highlight them. And I'll say that the partnership with the league has been outstanding. They left very inspired to continue working and advocating for funding and for grants. We're also looking for more grants to bring back to the city. But just as important for them to see like the work that they helped us do that is being put in the ground, and this is the reason why we continue to be successful as we are when it comes to, you know, putting our, you know, strong arguments, applications out there when it comes to grants, ensuring that we have been delivering time and time again. So I was very happy to have Constance Ruberal and Stoffus were both when we're there. Thank you for that. And it was a ridiculously hot day. We did a lot of walking, and I wanna also thank Cottage City who lent us a twenty-five passenger shuttle bus to facilitate how much people we could take up at once, and also like all of our departments, communications, you know, PD, public works, all of them were available for questions. And the administrative team did a beautiful job, along with the other members of the team at City Hall, to put packages together, so that way they left with a good understanding of who are, who we are as residents, the work that we're doing, and what our vision is for the city. So this is a big thank you to Abby that helped and supported. I, I just sent an email out to the team saying, I know I'm out there advocating heavily for the city. Letting them know how great we are, the work that we do, and, you know, and showcasing us and bringing people back that have been helping us or could continue to help us. But it takes a whole team here on the ground to make sure that we go through several additions of items in order to get what we need and make it through in the middle of like our busy days that we have. So. I will leave it at that. Valerie, you already read the events that are coming up, but we're very excited to have them, and the poster that they took with the synergies is gonna be featured in their office in Washington DC. And for the big conference, they're also gonna highlight the various things. And right now, they also have highlighted several things on social media. They they, their tag, their post was like, we love Mount Rainier, Maryland, in those exact words. So there, we got a couple of other cities going. They didn't sound so happy when they came to the city. I'm like, we treat them well. But we also got to sing happy birthday to a few of our friends that had August birthdays. So it was really special. So some, two members of NLC had birthdays, and two of our mayors also had birthdays. So that was good. Anyway, so this is a good way of showcasing how local and national work that we do has brought plenty of funds, highlight and positive reinforcement to the work that our team does, but we couldn't do this without the whole entire team. So thank you, team, alright, from our city manager all the way down, up and down, you know, up and down in this case, all the way down to us, right? Okay. So in saying that, I will say to you guys that I look forward to a wonderful year, okay? Alright, so we're gonna move on to item number four, presentation discussion on building applications for forty-three oh three thirtieth street, Mount Rainier. Forty-three ten thirtieth street, Mount Rainier. And this is, so Alma, I'm gonna, our director of code is here with us. I'm gonna give you the mic first. Go ahead. Is there anything we need to know about both addresses and other people here, Alma?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Thank you for having us here one more time. We had submission of two individual building applications, and we had to wait until actually now to present them, since, you know, you were all in a little recession. So first, we're gonna have forty-three oh three thirtieth street. I know Mr. Matthew Butler is here with us, and I know he's gonna be presenting his, his building permit that got approved by the county.
Sorry, welcome. Hi, how are you? Tell us a little bit about the changes you guys are planning to make, and a little bit about yourself as well.
Yeah, sure. Hi, my name is Matt Butler. This is.
Hi, I'm Neil.
I'm Matt Spouse.
Yeah, we're, we're a small family here. Moved here in twenty twenty, from Brooklyn, New York. And we have a two-year-old with us, and earlier this year, we realized that we're gonna have another one, another. Yeah, and so we like the neighborhood, we wanted to stick around and invest a little bit in the area, so we recruited a architect, Michael Romero, who is in Hyattsville to come up with a plan for like an addition that would give us another bedroom and a little bit more space, a lot more sunlight. Yeah, there. Yes.
Yeah.
So I guess this is like, this is on the screen now, is like our current layout. We've got a basement, a one, a one-fourth first floor with a dining room, and then two bedrooms upstairs. And then if you go to the the addition, at least, I think, on the first floor. That's, I think that's the existing layout currently. I think if you go up, or maybe? Sorry. These blueprints are pretty involved. Yeah, so like I said, like there'll be an addition on the back, the back of the house, so the front of the house is maintained exactly the same. And we requested for like the style to be consistent with the current layout of the house. Yeah, so the, so on the first floor, we'll have a sunroom with like lots of windows. And then above that sunroom addition will be a primary suite, which will include a bedroom and a closet and a bathroom. So that, that's the plan. We've, we're already underway, thanks to the approval of the permit in June or July, I believe. And we've contracted with a contractor that's also local in Hyattsville. And so far, we're very impressed with, with their work. They're doing a terrific job. And right now, we're in Airbnb, because I think they're gonna tear down a wall or so, one or two walls in the next couple of days. But yeah, we hope to have it set up so we can welcome the new addition to our family in that environment soon.
So, thank you so much. And first of all, congratulations on the new baby on the way, right? But also, we're always very happy to see our families continue to stay here, making adjustments to the house, so that way they continue to be part of our community, you know? Community is very important for all of us. So I will ask Alma, the county permit's already been approved, correct? And no, nothing that we need to know about?
No, no, mayor, everything has been approved.
Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna pass it over to, actually, let me do the second one together, and then Luke could give the spill for both houses. How about that, Luke? So I save you having to repeat it twice. Alright, so Alma, can you introduce, so if you guys could hold just for a little bit, and then we're gonna open it up to the council, okay? Alright, Alma, can you introduce the other address?
Sure. So we have the owner of forty-three ten thirtieth street to do his presentation. I know Mr. Desmond Decker is here to speak on behalf of his project.
Hello, Mr. Decker, how are you? Okay, if you're speaking, you are in mute. You have to unmute, yes. I think.
Alright, I can't hear anything, can you?
No, he can. He's having a little bit of technical difficulties. There you go. Your mic is open. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Yes, good evening again, Mayor and council members. And also, Matt, the neighbor across the street. I don't think we've met, but, but I know that there's some work going on across the street from mine. I acquired this property back in January, and as, well, some of us may know, it takes quite a while to get the approval process through the county. But in any case, we got the county approval. And then I learned that I also needed approval from the city, and I do apologize for not being on top of that. But I did speak with Ms. Ferufino a couple of times, as well as other staff members, and they were able to guide me and put me on the right track. I did present the architectural drawings, which were done by an architect that I've used on other projects that I have done over the years. And my intention, as you noticed from the drawings, is to add about eight hundred square foot on the back of the property. Four hundred on the first floor and four hundred on the second floor. And also, I've cut it out the the basement, and you know, just to update everything, so I can get new plumbing, electrical, and HVAC systems throughout the house. And I hope that once it's completed, it'll be a valuable addition to historic Mount Rainier. And I do hope that a very nice family would be able to cut it their own.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Alma, any concerns or anything we should know about this application?
No, mayor, it's the same thing. The county has actually approved the whole project, so we're doing good with that.
Alright, perfect. Thank you. So I'm glad you guys get to at least see and meet each other online, right? Because when I saw the address, I'm like, wait a minute. Is this a block project? And it sounded like fun, right? But at least you guys are gonna be working at the same time, which means that work should be done almost, you know, parallel, so your neighbors will not be suffering so much. But in doing that, I will pass it on to Constance Jessick, who will give you a rundown of the things that Director Ferufino already told you, but for the record, we have to tell you as well, so that way when our wonderful residents called to complain about you guys not following the rules. Are you telling us we never heard those rules? We could sit there and say there's a whole entire recording of the rules, but also be aware that you mayor and council do live in this neighborhood. So we do hear things, and if we hear about it, then you will hear about it, because our team hears about it, and they're not gonna be happy about it. Alright, so the floor is you for you to do the Brian Nettler spill, please.
Thank you, thank you. So first off, thank you for doing, for investing in Mount Rainier and being a part of the community. We appreciate you. Matt and company, it's exciting to have more, more human beings in the house. It's a lot of fun, so as much rest as you can now. No construction before eight AM, no construction after eight PM. If that happens, we get angry calls, and then you get angry calls, so let's just keep the angry calls to a minimum. Our city cares very much about our trees. Alma is highly, highly aware of our, our tree ordinances and has probably already given you all the information you need about if you're doing construction and it, and it impacts a protected tree, there are rules around that. Whether it's making sure that the roots are protected with orange fencing, and make sure no heavy machinery sort of sits on the root, on the roots. If you're excavating a lot of soil, which in our area is just pretty much clay, be careful with you, where you put that clay. Because if you create a big mound or hill of clay next to a neighbor's lawn, and it rains, there's gonna be a red river that goes right into your neighbor's property. So try to be mindful of that piece as well. And those are the big ones. Alma's terrific, though, so she's probably already told you about a lot of this. But those are the ones we just wanna make sure folks are very much aware of. And again, we appreciate you doing work on the city. We appreciate.
Um and again, we appreciate you doing work on the city. We appreciate you coming uh to us to tell her to tell us about it and uh we wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke, and obviously thank you for investing in Mount Rainier and to have a happy family and as you guys can tell from the process, even in Mount Rainier, we're very much in love who we are as a historic city and that's the reason we wanna make sure that that character stays and if anything else goes beyond, uh we do have the sign review board that is very, very skilled and wonderful people to make it through. Alright, Alma, so they could pick up their permit when? Is it tomorrow? Am I correct?
No, mayor, actually, because it was so long for the waiting, we actually just um revised um all the um permits that were given to them and we allowed them to start working, at least in the inside. Um so both properties did not have to do anything really on the um front of the property, so they were okay about starting. So they started already.
Perfect. Thank you so much for letting us know. So we're gonna let you guys go and enjoy your evening. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if not, we know you're busy. Um get on working on those beautiful properties. If you need anything from us, um you could reach us directly or you could also reach us through um Director Alma Ferufino, okay? So have a great night and if you guys wanna stay, please stay. If not, this is my bye. No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bye. Thank you, Alma, as well. Do I have anything else in the agenda for you, Alma, or you're done for today?
Uh no, ma'am, I'm done for today, but I'll definitely stay.
Alright, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure if I not push you up. Alright, so now we're gonna open it up to public comment. Melly, can you go up to what public comment is, please? Okay, so Valerie, can you go ahead and read it?
Yes, uh the rules for public comment. The mayor and city council invite and welcome comments at public meetings. The mayor or presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourself, first and last name for recording purposes and give the name of your street and block number, E G four forty-three hundred block of thirty-fourth street. Please indicate in the chat whether you would like the mayor to read your comment or you will speak on your comment. Uh public comment has a time limit of three minutes per speaker unless otherwise agreed upon by the mayor. While speaking, please maintain a courteous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about the performance or conduct of any city employee, please bring your concern to the attention of the city manager, who will look into the matter and respond to you. As a courtesy to other residents and businesses, the council requests that speakers not use specific addresses or names of individuals when describing a situation or making a complaint, that uh noting the block is preferred over a specific address.
Oh, go ahead, Valerie.
No, it's okay, I think. No, that's it, that's fine, okay.
I was like, I know, I know it's that. Cuz remember, I had to memorize it, so it was basically like written uh by script. And also like looking at Luke earlier when he was doing the Brian still, so like Luke, what happened to your writing notes? It's meeting one, he was like, let me fresh, like, you know, like, you know, still doing it and so on. Uh so please actually follow the rules. Um as I told you guys before, my job as the mayor is to like make sure the meeting runs and we respect the rules, right? And that goes for everybody, including mayor and council. So in doing that, um if you do have a comment and you're here in our Zoom, um put in the chat your name and block as uh Valerie stated. So if you are in the thirty-seven block and your house number is, you know, thirty-seven whatever, uh just say thirty-seven hundred, okay? Alright, if I have nobody in the chat, we're gonna move on and we also usually ask that if the item is in the agenda, wait for the item in the agenda. If you cannot stay, then you could talk about it, but we usually don't do double buys. So if you talked about an item in the agenda in the public comment, you know, that is your time to speak because um you know, that will allow for our meetings to flow. Cuz I know all of us love not having to stay until one o'clock in the morning anymore, twelve, eleven, if possible. Alright, so I give it enough time for people to type in the chat if they wanted to speak. Uh Jared Redd with a D at the end, is anybody on Facebook? Alright, perfect. Thank you so much. So I will be closing public comments at this point. Alright, so moving on to all business. Oops, sorry. This is the reappointment of Miss Stephanie, um oh my gosh, Stephanie, I'm just equally as bad. Uh Sel singer, co-chair and Emily Berg, co-chair and grand reviewer. Uh Van Campen Saravia Bethany, Miss Bethany, see, I I got your name a little bit better, Bethany, this time. And appointment of Megan Harbor and Jenny Hafartel. The Recreation Committee, um so right now, just to give you guys a tiny bit of background is the way the legislation is written is uh we appoint them every year. So we have asked Valerie for us to put the legislation on the work session for the next meeting so that we could do it every other year. So I'll be entertaining a motion um that states that the the adjustment will be uh changed based on the city rules, so that we don't come back next month and have to give them another year appointment, cuz at this point we're trying to run smooth meetings. So if I could have a motion on the floor, um making to for the appointment of the people that we just mentioned above and granting the extension uh to an extra year once we vote and approve. Look, I heard you.
Second.
Is we probably moved and second, any discussion? Objections, extensions? Uh hearing none. We have approved our wonderful recreation committee and um and once the rules change, uh their appointments will be extended for the extra year, okay? So be a two-year appointment. Alright, I'll ask you guys if fit. So that way at least if we decide to change it, it shouldn't be a problem, okay? So thank you so much for the wonderful work you guys are doing. I know that although you guys were not appointed officially, um you guys have now stopped working. And uh babe, thank you also to Bob who um worked for many, many years with us in the red committee. And he's still, he's gonna take a step back, but he's still gonna be there um working as a volunteer, you know, um because they are so wonderful, him and Mario as well. Alright, thank you to all those that have volunteered um in the various uh red committee activities. We definitely appreciate you and the residents obviously attend. Cuz that means our money is well spent. Alright, discussion on mayor, uh vice mayor rotation. We have fifteen minutes to discuss the vice mayor rotation. So our last vice mayor was Luke and Luke stayed a little longer. Vice mayor. So technically, how do you call it, like at this point, I I basically have asked Valerie and I know that uh you guys have been wonderful, that if I needed a substitution for whatever reason, um Jared Valerie had been stepping up um regardless, uh whether we have events or where we have meetings. So the they have been serving the, you know, they have been serving the core function um of it. I understand it's a lot of work, um and I understand it helps that I'm usually around, so you guys don't have to take a lot of the load of the work. But it's always great to see um the extra support when you guys come. So at this point, I had appointed, um we guys heard in the front meeting, like I have asked sorry to serve as as my vice mayor. Um uh so we, how do you call it, like um the resolution overlapped and uh you know, by default Luke served on it and we didn't think about it until like, you know, the meetings were about to start again. We're like, oh, wait a minute. It was supposed to, you know, we we did what we did. It doesn't matter. So I mean, we'll work collectively. Alright. The floor is open. What do you guys wanna do? Put a motion and let's get moving, cuz seven thirty thirty-seven. Go ahead, um Jared, Valerie, Luke.
Sorry, can I, Selena, can you clarify what we're discussing here is?
So we need to appoint a vice mayor because the resolution overlapped, you know, um that's basically what happened.
Oh, I'm.
So we have a discussion about the over the vice mayor role and and I guess basically it.
Yeah, I mean, I think of uh pointing Valerie in for this next year is that, I mean, given that she would have, I think, would be next up uh till uh till May um twenty twenty-five. So I I would think that would make sense and then that, I mean, that to me is, I think, the only thing we would need to do, cuz we're gonna have elections um in uh May twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so make a motion to appoint Valerie Woodall as vice mayor for the next year.
Second.
Any discussion? Objection, extension here now. Valerie, you're officially appointed for the next year, okay? And then we'll go back and review it.
Sounds good.
I'm gonna have to give you extra work, Valerie, to make up for the summer months that you were doing the work and you was alone with others. Sorry, Valerie. Alright, moving on to the next item, new business reading resolution. I'm gonna collapse both of them together, guys. Because you guys have heard these resolutions, I basically, we just read through them. We read through them every single year. So the first resolution is resolution oh two dash twenty twenty-four proclaiming February as Black History Month. And number nine is resolution oh three twenty twenty-four, reproducing rights as human rights. Um, oop, that's it. So just a couple of background information, because people don't seem to understand very much how the proclamations work. The proclamations fall under the mayoral right to do and they're not attached to me as Selena, they're attached to me as the mayor, the office of the mayor. So even if I live like in, you know, tomorrow in three hundred years, those proclamations still stand no matter what. So I heard a couple discussion about like if they're not resolutions, the minute I stop being mayor, they collapse, they're not gonna celebrate, blah, blah, blah. That's not the way it works, but I also, you guys need to understand that resolutions take a while for us to get through them. And the proclamation, legal team checks it anyways, is binding and will celebrate every year. And the way I make resolutions is infinite time unless a new mayor comes around and says this is not what we want from the office of the mayor, they could choose to pull it. And at that point, you know, the council could choose to say, you know, you might have pulled it, but we are voting to do X, right? But to pull a res- uh to put a proclamation is not as easy as it sounds, um mainly because it's the commitment of the mayoral office to um as the representative of the city to um to speak on behalf of the city in certain issues. So in saying that, we'll do those too, um and I'll continue doing other proclamations. So you guys just heard the human rights proclamation, uh what, two months ago? So it should be fresh on you and the very one. I read it every single year. And the only reason is we, the only adjustment that we make is like sometimes every other year or every year, depending what the organization wants. They changed the theme for the for the year, for the African-American month. Sometimes it's health, sometimes it's entertainment, sometimes it's like, you know, X, Y, and Z. So that's the only thing that we adjust to make sure that we are in line with what um the um African-American um historic um heritage organization wants us to do. But uh Valerie, can you go ahead and read through it and our legal team already um um I think she's she's already went through it as well, but go ahead, Valerie. It's all yours.
Um okay, resolution of the mayor and city council of Ma- Mount Rainier, Maryland, proclaiming February as Black History Month. Whereas the African-American uni- uh I'm sorry, whereas the African-American community have made meaningful and significant contributions to the city of Mount Rainier, state of Maryland and the United States and the world, and whereas uh the month of February is nationally recognized as Black History Month. And whereas in nineteen fifteen, Doctor Ca- uh Carter Godwin Wood- Woodson noted scholar and son of farmer former slaves founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, A S A L H. And whereas Doctor Woodson initiated Black History Week, February twelfth, uh nineteen twenty-six. And for many years, the second week of February was chosen so as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln was celebrated by black people in the United States. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America, Canada, and Great Britain. And whereas um many black people have made the city of Mount Rainier their home in spite of the abhorrent attempts to exclude them and made significant contributions to the city, state, and nation. And whereas black history is American history and should be taught to students since elementary school. And whereas the African-American community has served in the U- United States Armed Forces since the First World War, even though at home they had no rights and segregation was at its peak. We honor their sa- sacrifices and celebrate our veterans. And whereas we celebrate and affirm the importance of black health and wellness to our community and throughout our state and the nation. And whereas we celebrate the diversity of black people in the city of Mount Rainier and our world and the black diaspora. Um whereas where they self-identify as African-American, African, Afro-Latino, Afro-Caribbean, Afro-Asian and or black. And whereas we acknowledge systemic racism has led to African-Americans being more likely to die at an early age from all causes more commonly di- misdiagnosed and impacted by health inequities throughout our healthcare system that have traumatized the black community. And where we celebrate black health and wellness, including the legacy of black scholars, midwives, doctors and practitioners of not only Western medicine, but all the um other indigenous ways of promoting health and healing through so throughout the black diaspora. And whereas during Black History Month, we elevate the achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political systems. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued uh need to battle racism, stand up and be an ally and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas um uh whereas the city of Mount Rainier is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community, throughout Maryland and our nation. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier will continue to work toward becoming an inclusive city in which all the community, past, present, and future are respected and that the African-American community is recognized for their contributions to our new our city, country, and the world. And whereas African-Americans have played a key role in the advancement of the city of Mount Rainier and the world in the multiple fields of studies, including but not limited to arts, culture, science, math, politics, history, business, music, sports, medicine, economic development, education, agriculture, literature, dance, high technology and human and civil rights, including LGBTQAI plus rights. Um there's no field that the African-American community have not positively impacted and have advanced. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier commits to doing everything in our power to uh to demand that we all seek a greater understanding and implement changes to ensure that um racism and the unjust uh treatment of any person is not tolerated in any way or form within the city of Mount Rainier. And whereas Black History Month is a time for citizens of Mount Rainier to remember the contributions and legacy of those who helped build our nation, fought against uh prejudice and to secure um lives of dignity and opportunity for all our citizens, advanced the cause of civil rights for all Americans and strengthened our families and c- communities. And now ther- therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Mount Rainier recognizes it the um it recognizes and acknowledges the contributions, achievements, and influence of the African-American community. And resolve that the mayor and city council of Mount Rainier designate Fe- February as Black History Month.
Thank you so much. Can you take it all the way to the top, um Melly? Alright, so Melly, do me a favor. So this was the first reading, guys, okay? It's gonna go for a second reading and adoption, although we have heard that document. I think maybe for the last, when I originally originally wrote it down, when I was, I believe, a council member. So it's been years that this thing has been, actually as a mayor, I think. Um it's I, once you've been serving for so long, you get gray hairs, right, Luke? Um it's only been like seven plus years. Somewhere around the time between the last three and a half years and the seven years that we have been around, um I wrote that resolution. I wrote the proclamation, so it was proclamation, so it was when I was a mayor, and now we're turning into a resolution. It's basically the same exact one. And that's it. So Valerie, do you need a cup of water as you go on the second round of um of reading?
I think I'm ready.
Okay, so again, it's just a read-through. You guys have heard it hundreds of times. They shouldn't be a problem with any of them. Go on, Valerie.
Alright, resolution of the mayor and city council of Mount Rainier, Maryland, proclaiming reproductive rights are Human Rights Day. Um whereas on June four twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, the United States Supreme Court Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization overturned a fifty-year precedent set by Roe v. Wade, Planned Parenthood versus Casey and eliminated the federal constitutional right to abortion in the United States and subsequently more than a dozen states have passed legal barriers that fully ban abortion and many others have passed legal barriers that and many others have passed legal barriers that severely restrict abortion. And whereas uh, there has been increased risk of criminalization of people seeking abortion and doctors, nurses, and those involved in providing and dispensing reproductive and gender-affirming care. And whereas since the overturn of Roe v. Wade via the Dobbs decision and subsequent bans has forced thousands affected to travel outside state borders to seek care in states such as Maryland where abortion is legal. And whereas the access to safe and legal abortion is a human right that should be safeguarded and legally protected. And no one should be criminalized for um, any pregnancy outcomes or for providing essential care. And whereas pregnant people have, who have been denied abortion care, may be putting their health, fertility, and lives at risk, have been forced to carry non-viable uh pregnancies to term, or have been criminalized for miscarriage, the circumstances of their pregnancies, abortions, and other pregnancy outcomes. And whereas the retrogression, retrogression on um, abortion rights in the United States conflicts with the United States obligation under international human rights law. And whereas we have seen in various countries the effects of criminalizing healthcare, women forced to carry unviable pregnancies to term at the cost of their health and sometimes uh, lives and women serving decades lo- long sentences for suffering miscarriages. Such are the case, the international cases of Beatriz and others v. El Salvador and countless women serving thirty years or more in jail in El Salvador. And whereas treaties ratified by the United States are binding on individual states and are the quote supreme law of the land. Unquote, um, under clause two of article uh, um, six of the Constitution. And, and um.
You're fine.
Okay, I'm sorry, um, whereas indi- indigenous, black, and brown people, people of color, people with low incomes, people living in rural areas, ar- areas, people with disabilities, sorry, hold on one second.
I'll continue if you want.
Alright, sorry, um, people, disabilities, immigrants, L G P T Q I, can you hear? Maybe you should read for a second, if that's okay.
So O D B T Q dismissing an A plus individuals and other marginalized individuals are disproportionately likely to be surveilled, arrested, charged, prosecuted, convicted, and heavily punished within the American crime, criminal justice system. And due to systematic discrimination to experience additional scrutiny from the American legal system. And whereas the United States has been reviewed by the International Convention on Civil and Political Rights, the I C C P R, the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination, the I C E R D. Two treaty monitoring bodily uh bodies since the Dove versus Jackson. Women's Health Organizations Decisions, the United States Human Rights Committee has explicitly recommended the United States government at all levels, federal, state, and local uphold human rights obligations under the treaties, including protecting section reproduction rights, uh, health and rights. And whereas abortions illegal, the, where abortions is legal in the state of Maryland, it has been since nineteen seventy three and was reaffirmed again by voters in a referendum in nineteen ninety two. However, a statute can be repealed legislatively without involving the voters. And Dove has shown, even if abortion is currently legal, it can remain at risk. And whereas constitutional amendments offers the highest form of protection for abortion care in Maryland. Repe- uh repealing an amendment to the constitution is more, is much more difficult than reversing other types of policy protections for reproductive freedom and. Whereas Maryland Governor Wes Moore signed into law the law, into law the Reproductive Freedom Bill package in twenty twenty three that included an electronic health record data privacy bill. A shielding bill to protect providers and patients of legal reproductive healthcare, including abortion from attacks of anti-abortion extremists in other states. A bill requiring four-year residential public college to put in place a plan for students to access comprehensive section reproductive healthcare, including abortion, S T I testing and treatment, contraceptives and emergency contraception, contraceptives and constitutional amendments to ensure every person in Maryland has the right to prevent, continue, or end their own pregnancy. And whereas the Reproductive Freedom Bill has allowed for constitutional amendments to be undivided in Maryland in November twenty twenty four. The decision to prevent pregnancy through contraception carry pregnancy term, uh, terminate a pregnancy through abortion will only be up to a pregnant person and their healthcare provider. In the absence of federal legislation, this is the strongest possible protection of the right to reproduction freedom Maryland, for Maryland residents. And whereas the resolution aligns that Mount Rainier Stephen government with its humans' rights obligation under International Convention on Civil and Political Rights in accordance with Article six, clause two of the Constitution. And now therefore be a result of the mayor and city council of Mount Rainier designate June twenty four, twenty four as reproductive rights and human rights is in the city of Mount Rainier. And this is also gonna get to readings, this was reading number one. That I know honestly, at this point, you guys could vote and go through them, because the reality is like you, you've heard these things like until the cows go home. So, in saying that, they're there, you read through them. Uh, this is not new information, it's information that Ali's for the human um, human rights one. That we literally discussed it last month before we went into recess, uh, with the proclamation, I read through it. And the um, African American one is at least every single fairy for the last three. As long as I've been mayor, we have read through it, that's one of the first thing they're on it. And I will say something to you guys, like, you know, um, sometimes it's hard when people feel that you, you um, you're not putting in, you're putting some of the proclamations or resolutions forward, I'll tell you this, uh, you guys know I'm very proud Salvadorian. El Salvador, Salvador American Day is actually in August. I have not done a resolution for that either, so the Salvador community started asking me for it, and I said, we'll wait. Uh, we'll wait through this round of proclamations are done. And I will work through it, I go, but it's only so much we could do, you know? It's, it's a very heavy item, and I think that this is the reason why the proclamations um, a little bit um, smoother, faster, and they do what they need to do. Alright, council, any questions on them? If there's none, we'll move on, because this was just a read through. Danielle, is that an O hen, you hen, or what are you? Luke, you're good, Jared, you're good, Valerie, you're good, Danielle, what is it?
Yeah, um, the date on the uh, on the uh, reproductive rights, is it just for this year or is this going forward? Because it only says twenty twenty four, is this going forward as well?
Um, it's gonna be going forward, but that's where the proclamation comes into hand, so yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was from this date forward and not just retrospective, thank you.
Alright, I think council, you were good, we're gonna move on to the next item. Item number ten, discussion approval reimbursement for teacher appreciation event at Thomas Stone Elementary School. Concerned Berkara will discuss with mayor and council to approve reimbursement of sixty seven dollars and thirty cents from line item fifty five four five, city sponsored meetings. City sponsored meetings for mayor and council for the teacher staff appreciation of uh, elementary. Go ahead Danielle.
Thanks mayor, um, thank you. I wanted to do a little something for the teachers at Thomas Stone Elementary to welcome them back to the new school year. So I took donuts and coffee to them on August twenty second, which was the day before their open house. Um, I would have asked beforehand, but we didn't have a meeting in either July or August. Um, I hope that you will allow me to be reimbursed. The number is actually wrong, it's actually sixty three fifty six. The number six, uh, sixty seven is after taxes. Um, so um, I would like to ask um, for reimbursement of that if I can. And also, and I forgot to get this in there, and ask permission um, to use money from my uh, line item, my allotted line item for my quarterly community meeting um, as well. So, I'm just asking to use the money for my line item for this.
So, I will say two things, uh, the second thing that you said, it wasn't part of the agenda, so that's not even up for discussion right now. Um, and two, there is a process that we all have adopted and respected, where we bring the item to a work session, then it goes for both for approval. Um, and this is definitely not what was followed in this instant. And, and I'll be clear, many of us and, you know, for mayor and council and even, you know, staff, whenever we um, you know, have failed to follow procedure, you know, we basically make um, we are responsible for what we did, because it was not allocated. So in saying that, I'm gonna open the floor, um, because we have discussed this process over and over again, that's what I particularly was surprised, it wasn't the agenda. Because it's not the first time we have addressed the same issue and, you know, repeatedly over and over again. And I think that we all have, we all have buy, we all have gone to meetings, we all have like support um, the various local organizations, and we understood that. Um, you know, we failed to submit information, then we're responsible for it. But I'm gonna open the floor to um, to council, um, Luke, Valerie, Jared, uh, whichever of you guys want to, I'm sorry. My eyes are definitely trolling me with alar- allergies, go on.
I just have a question, I thought, don't we do um, is this sort of a little bit beyond the point, a little bit related? Don't we do a teacher appreciation, um, don't we give them five hundred bucks or so? Isn't there something we do every year for the teachers?
Yeah, five hundred dollars each, and um, as of a couple years back, if you remember Luke, we have allocated um, a thousand dollars, five hundred each for the teachers' appreciation. We actually um, bring it up to mayor and council. And we do the, you know, although it's in the budget, we still like go ahead and like vote as mayor and council to continue supporting it. And uh, we direct the city manager to cut um, the checks and we deliver them, correct? So that's money that's already been given uh, to the teachers every year, and it's actually in this year's budget, correct Mr. Kamali?
Yes, mayor, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so.
We're already giving them a thousand dollars, so, and uh, every year we do that. Five hundred, you know, dollars each school.
Okay, go ahead Luke, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's why I was just a little confused, confused by this, um. Uh, you know, obviously I don't want anyone to have to come out of their own pocket for, for stuff. I think Selena's point about bringing something to us first, um, so that you know it's getting approved, you know you're getting paid. Um, I think that's important, um, just for expenditure of city funds. Um, and so, I, I mean, I'm, I find like, the money is not a lot, I'm fine reimbursing somebody for, for this amount of money. I just think that like, moving forward, like the issue is just, we didn't know about this ahead of time to be able to vote for it, and it seems redundant of money we already budgeted for in a line item. And so, in the future, like, I, I just think that we should, and that all would have come out and if we would have discussed this ahead of time in a work session, like, all that would have come out, we would have said, oh, we already give them, we already budgeted five hundred to a thousand dollars, you know, why are we doing this more, we would have, would have had a chance to have that discussion. So I just think that would have been the, the best process. I mean, I'm, I'm, we can move this to, I mean, I'm okay with moving this to like a lot of next legislative session and uh, appro- approving it as a expenditure, I just think like, we've gotta be better about bringing that stuff to uh, to this body before spending it, because you could not get approved, and then you're out money, and that's not a good situation. So, thanks, that's my comments.
Thank you Luke, I'm gonna pass it to Jared, and then Valerie, then I'll say my piece.
Yeah, thanks Luke, that was, yeah, that was kind of, I would say my reaction as well here, I'm, you know, just kind of directionally. Obviously, directionally supportive of um, doing things for our schools. I would, um, and, and, and that's why I was a little confused when this came up, because uh, we already do things at the schools, and I think I, certainly if we're gonna do things for schools, I'd wanna do something at both schools. And I know that's why we officially have um, you know, officially sponsor um, kind of a appreciation efforts through the city, and that way it comes, you know, it comes from the mayor and council, and then by virtue, the ci- city and city staff and the city, you know, sort of writ large. Um, because I wanna, I think we wanna communicate, we have communicated that everyone, um, you know, we're supportive of the schools, our two elementary schools in the, in the city, uh, and certainly across, across the board. Um, the other thing, I think, just, yeah, to Luke's other point is, you know, I, I, I don't, um, you know, we, we, process wise, we need to bring things, if they require approval of cit- and, and use of city funds, and thus taxpayer funds, and, you know, community, big, I mean, they're funds from the community, we, we need to follow our own procedures. And approve not after the fact, but before, I mean, the, the, you know, follow the process that we're supposed to have. Um, so I, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I, process wise, we kind of just need to rekinda, I think, make sure we reiterate these for, in the process and how this works. Um, you know, maybe a, maybe a reminder both for um, our current council and whoever is on council in the future. So it's, it's clear how this um, this, this process should work, thank you.
Thank you, Jared, Valerie.
Yeah, thank you, um, um, and I, um, generally li- like Luke and Jared have taken my um, my thoughts. Um, I think um, it is such a small amount, but I, and I think it's great to appreciate teachers and to bring them donuts and coffee and support them. I think that's critical. I also think it's a little bit, like, going just to one school with donuts and not to both schools with donuts, you know, that can, can rub people the wrong way and make people feel a little, little um, unease. And so I think it's critical that if you're, if you're planning to do this, you know, in the future, that one, that the council talks about it first. Um, two, that we allocate the funds appropriately in the budget. Um, and three, that we are um, uh, you know, admiring both schools and, and, and showing them the both of love. So, that's, that's where I'm at, and I also, the, the city sponsored meetings, the line item, I think, you know, we should probably work on that this coming year, um, as a budget item, Mr. Kamali, because it is very unclear. Um, you know, I think the, the point of the funds are to use it for um, meetings that the city is hosting. Um, and not necessarily for um, you know, pet projects of individual council members. So, I think that's something we should look at adjusting in the coming budget if we can, so, that's, that's where I'm at, thank you.
Thank you Valerie, I think that, for me, this is like, if it had been the first time, it, you know, be like, okay, here's a correction and let's fix it for, you know, let's not do it anymore, but this is not the first time an item has been brought up that we need to um, adjust. The other thing, I think, is kind of like really false, when you go ahead and publicize that, um, you brought the donuts to the teachers when it's taxpayer, taxpayers' money and it's not even approved money, right? So I think that if um, like many of us have brought like, you know, either juices or coffee, whatever it is, right? One, the see, the meeting was never um, approved through mayor and council, there was no meeting, it was just like, let me drop uh, coffee and donuts, right? The other thing is like, the city manager was given a receipt post after, so dating went through the approval. The city never advertised any of it, because they didn't know it exists, and thi- this is meant for community meetings, right? And we are following the community meeting rules, right? That's exactly what it's for. This was definitely not for a community meeting, and we have gone time and time again on it. And at this point, I feel like, we all take responsibility for not following procedure, and we all basically have learned to do it. But I feel like, if we continue, I'll, you know, continue to do it, I just feel like, you know, it, it just seems like some people play through one set of rules, and the other ones play through a different set of rules. And I'll tell you this, I do a lot of stuff that I'm responsible for, and if I lose our receipt, that's a donation to the city, you know? And um, I don't come in and tell Mr. Kamali, here's the toys you see, you could go to Target and like figure out what, what each of them are. That becomes a donation on, and if I forget to turn receipts, that's it, right? But even when I purchase items, like, I make sure that it is clear that it is city money that we're utilizing for annual events, including like, let's say, my uh, Christmas event, I don't say like, you know, I'm the one doing, and this is something Mr. Kamali could tell you. Not only do I bring monetary donations, so not only do I bring toys myself that I donate. And I still don't call the mayor Selena Benitez, like, you know, here's my toys that I give away, right? It's called a city of Mount Rainier uh, Christmas giveaway. So, that to me feels like, um, so what are we doing next? So if Jared forgets it, because somebody else forgot it, then we could say, okay Jared, like, you, you get one, one break as well, because somebody else got a break. Valerie, you get a break, Luke, you get a break, or are we going from this point on, the line has to be straight and somebody else got the break? So the rules are set for a reason, and I think that we have discussed a line item fifty five four five repeatedly. And we have actually told the city manager what the process is, so that way there's no problems. So I kind of feel like, we're giving the staff mixed information, when we tell the staff like, this is the process to follow, right? And the rest of us have to follow it, and now it's back on the agenda, because somebody uh, decided one morning that they were gonna go drop donuts and coffee to one of the schools and not the other, right? And put out there that um, they're bringing like coffees and donuts to them, right? When at the end of days, this, you know, the city taxpayers who are bringing coffee and donuts is not your personal money. And I think that we're all having very respectful not to utilize city money as our own personal money. And Mr. Kamali has been very good at making sure that, you know, everything's followed through, we basically. And Mr. Kamali has been very good at making sure that, you know, everything's followed through, we basically have been um. Very responsible making sure that um, it's utilized of what it is, but. No information went out to the city, nobody was aware of this, um. And it puts in a situation that's really awkward because I have meetings I need to attend and now I'm like looking around, I'm like, I am so sorry, I. Definitely didn't, didn't think that this is what this money is being used for, you know, so I think that's something that. If you guys wanna remove it out of the budget, because now we have allocated funding everywhere we need to be, then that's something that we need to discuss as well. If that will facilitate things, but um, I think that at this point to me it's not. The amount itself, it's the fact that we continue just overriding the rules over and over again and. And it becomes the same thing, so at this point, we do not care about the rules, let's be clear with our city manager and say, hey. At any point, anybody could come in and just get a reimbursement on things that they're doing and. And that's fine, but we're also putting the staff in a. Very awkward position because it's in the agenda, now Mr. Kamali could have said, no, we're not gonna put it on the agenda because the rules state that this is the process. But we put it in because obviously we're willing to say, sure, no problem, once again, so we're going back and forth on what we're dictating on doing. So Luke, I do see your hand up, go ahead.
Um, I would just say, I, I, I might be the only person who remembers, Selena, you may remember too. It was before we were elected, going to a city council meeting. The last time s- uh, city council and mayor salaries were raised, the, which is. Been a long time since we, since we raised that, that was twenty fifteen maybe. Um, and the rationale given was. So, just so the public's aware, we get after taxes about six hundred and seventy-seven dollars a month. Um, and the rationale given was that, that, that money could pay for things like. If you have an email, um, uh, 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 a group that you pay for in order to like be able to do bulk email. Um, if you buy things for, for stuff. Um, so there was, the legislative intent behind our stipend was to cover. Some costs that you might have as an elected official, some incidental costs. Um, it's, and it's also meant to pay you kind of for your services, but it's not like a. You're getting a salary and so, I think to, to Valerie's point earlier, like. Um, and the point Selena just made, like if we wanna, the, the budget does a much better job today of covering. All the things that we used to use in that kind of line item for staff stuff, um, and if. Folks feel like they want other, you know. You, more, more funding for other stuff that they need to do as an elected official, you know, maybe that's a conversation for potentially increasing the stipend. Um, and, and so I think, um. That, that might be just kind of the two, two ways to, to look at this and it might be worthy of debate when. Um, budget season comes, because I know the stipend for the elected officials has not risen since twenty fifteen and I think that. You know, obviously, everybody else's cost of living has increased and. Um, you know, that may be something worth considering, I, not that I want to do that or anything, I'm just trying to. To talk about the sentiments at play here and what the. Right policy solutions might be to the sentiments that everyone's trying to express.
Thank you, Luke, Jared. Your hands up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that um, that is. You know, from a. From a kind of stipend standpoint, that's what I look at the stipend as and if that's generally what I have allocated my. You know, the stipend we get for council, it tends to go back into things like Luke mentioned for, you know, I have a little website, I have a. Email list, a newsletter, um, you know, and in part the, the um. That's defrayed by, you know, the, the stipend that we get that, you know, kind of helps me pay for the monthly costs of the. Website hosting and stuff and, you know, other things that I, when I support. Things going on in our community, um, like a, you know, PTO, I, you know, typically kind of look at like the stipend I get is. And pour, and usually return, try to return as much of that um, to the community. Uh, you know, where, where possible, so I, that, that's kind of the way I was looking at it, I had always looked at it, so Luke, I thanks for the historical context. Cause that happened before I was on council and I appreciate your note about um. Historic arc and the, you know, things trajectory we, we, we could take going forward, but I, I, I do think it's. Important to clarify this, both with, from a process perspective now, but also going forward on. How we um. You know, how we, how we look at uh, these uh, budget allocations and line items, thank you.
Thank you, and just to um, back up what Luke was saying, the other thing is like. Before, like the customers had to come out, quite a few of them had to buy their own business cars. Had to get their own computers, their own iPads and everything else, we no longer have to do that, the city provides all of that. For us, you know, and even some councils before used to utilize um. Out of their own pocket money buying shirts, right, that with um, with city logos and name tags and stuff like that, the city takes care of all of that. There's a lot of things that like, you know, the city does take on, that doesn't mean we shouldn't consider like either. Deciding to increase the cost of living every year when it comes to mayor and council as well, right? In order to make sure that every year um. That number doesn't um, doesn't change because, um, yeah, every year that passes by because the cost of living changes, right? We could pay less, we get three or five percent less um, than the year before. Uh, when it comes to the cost of living increase, but that's basically what the idea of um, the stipend um. The stipend is or, or was, and I think the city now is better at covering other things that um, we did not get covered in the past. Danielle, I see your hand and then I'm gonna go to Valerie.
Okay, thanks, um. Just, just real quick and I mean, this, you can go and look on the uh, June meeting back in the business meeting, I. Attempted to bring a uh, request for money for a Ward One community meeting. Um, then and was told I had to bring the request to a legislative meeting, which is why I slotted it for tonight. To answer those questions and you can go back at the uh, June business meeting and see that, um. I was told, and, and I've been around a minute, most of you know I've been around, especially Luke and you, Selena, um. Historically, whenever there were things that a member of the council did for their ward. Or the community at whole, they used this particular line item, in fact, Selena, you're the one who. Actually, it was you and Shabali who taught me about that when I was on Recreation Committee. Um, specifically the one year that we did the uh, stockings for seniors, Selena, you and I went shopping and. You uh, said you were using your line item to uh, help purchase those things and Shabali did uh. Food um, for that event and she bought that as well, she said with this particular line item, so. These are the things that um, I've been told and um, have experienced for the last quite a few years using this line item. Um, I have seen and, and this, what I did was not. A unity thing, I know that uh, the city does things for both schools, but. I see a lot happening for Mount Rainier Elementary and I wanted to do something as. A Ward One representative for my school in Ward One and. It, it would be the same thing as if I did something for businesses, you know, in my ward, um. I, I would be focusing on my ward, which is what I did with going to Thomas Stone, I wanted to thank. And welcome back my teachers who are teaching my students who live in my ward. And so that was my thought process on that and um. Which is why I did it, it was greatly appreciated, um, I met a lot of the teachers, I'm happy to and. Brian said, we're happy to eat the sixty-three dollars, it's not a big deal, it was just, you know. Historically, that's what this line item has been used in the past, um. If you wanna reach, we, we discussed this line item at the budget hearing this past uh, year. Or this past legislative year and we discussed that it was to you, be used for, um. When we do things for our ward and our residents and we would come and ask. To use it specifically from this line item and in fact, Luke, I just looked through the budget. You specifically said, you wrote it out, you know, you said, and we agreed what it should say on the uh. Definition, I didn't find it under mayor and council tab and sure it's in there somewhere, but. So um, I'm just going off of what historically has happened, what I've been told and directed. If you guys, if two people don't wanna agree to reimburse me, it's fine, we can just let it go, sorry I asked.
So Valerie, I'm gonna give you a floor, but a point of clarification, Danielle, so you're aware. The stocking for seniors, I paid them out of my pocket, I didn't went to the city to get reimbursement. That was a donation I personally made myself, I don't always share with residents the things that I give out of my pocket. But I pay for it myself, uh, one and two, I think the rules got established when more funding um. Was switched into the budget to start covering community organizations, community events that the city didn't used to have before. And that has changed also what uh, the line item is being used for, the other thing to address is like. The line item, the agenda does not says money for a future event, it says specifically for reimbursement. So although we have decided to. Talk about it because you mentioned it, that wasn't what this line item was about and um, you don't, you know, that wasn't the process that was established. So um, and one more thing that is important to bring up because I think it's bad for us to give bad misinformation. The schools have kids for both wards, not just one, okay? So this is the reason why we help and volunteer on both schools, this is the reason why I support both schools. Not just one or the other, and I wanna be very clear, this is the reason why when the businesses needed help, we came together. And helped them out as a city, not just as a war, war one versus the other war, most of the businesses technically, maybe for. A very few are actually in war two. Like, most of them are in war two, as a matter of fact, there's like a handful that are in war one, most of them are in war two. And that's the reason why we, we do it, we come out as a city together to help them when um, there was um. Help that needed for the businesses, when it came to construction, Luke didn't say, well, let me talk to Valerie and, and Jared, so that would we help? He said, how can we help the businesses in, in the city? The end, but majority of the businesses heavily are actually in war two, not war one, so we need to be very careful that we not start splitting. Things as such, because we're gonna get ourselves in a situation where um. We're not being equitable across the city, but again, the students for in Mount Rainier and Thomas Stone. They're from both wards, not just one or the other, although physically the, the buildings are in two different wards. The reality is the students are not, and I'm a perfect example that I'm in Ward One and my child. Along with like everybody else that's in this side of town. It's um, it's on Mount Rainier Elementary. So when we talk about the schools, this is the reason why we give them five hundred dollars, even this is the reason why we gave them twenty. Plus, you know, twenty thousand each, this is the reason why we support them for the events that they have. At the same time equally. Yeah, you might not realize that this also created a feeling for the other school to feel like the city is not. Standing up and like, you know, supportive of the other teachers, at the end of day. Both schools are teaching our students and our community and by that I mean every single person that is here with their child, tends there or not. So wanna make it very clear, because I know this is the reason Valerie and myself are the, you know, representatives for the schools. Um, and not just this schools, because we go ahead and have talks with other schools as well that are having like kids that, like live in our city, but. You know, attend outside our city uh, grounds, but let's make sure we do not make, um, let's make sure we do not put information out there that. Thomas Stone kids are world war kids only, um, because that's not the case and I don't wanna fall into that, cause I already had. Complaints of people feeling that um, that there is um, you know, that one school gets helped more than the other. They've been giving the same um, amount of funding both ways and I will tell you that. Valerie and myself also volunteer at Thomas Stone. And also um, team who's the president of the PTO Thomas Stone. Of Mount Rainier Elementary works very heavily when it comes to the Thomas Stone School, they both collaborate, so. That model that they have in Valerie, please tell me if this is wrong, they are two schools, one community. They're very much entwined in making sure we all know that they work as a unit. Together, both of them, not one versus the other one and not on top of the other, so we wanna make sure as a city. We do not like go ahead and start making those separations between the other, cause that does not work. So that, the kids that go to it belongs to all of the residents here. And to everybody in mayor and council, not just one war versus the other, because that to me is not acceptable, you know? We need to be responsible, although we don't have jurisdiction in any of the schools. We do our best to support both of our school center teachers across, no matter what. Go ahead Valerie, the floor is yours.
Um, thank you, I think um, I was gonna touch on that, that we have a number of Ward Two and Ward One. Uh, city residents that go to both schools, um, we also host other uh, communities, so we have Brentwood, North Brentwood and Cottage City. At our schools as well, um, and so it's just important to know that the schools uh. While they're in the city and, and different wards, that they are part of one community, um. And I, I mean, again, I, I just think we should clarify city sponsored meetings, this line. So that it's not a place where you can just purchase things for one thing that didn't have anything to do with the city um, itself. Um, so, and I, I do appreciate that the budget has gotten uh, a lot less complicated um, and a lot uh, more streamlined, so that. You know, going forward, when we do allocate funds to both schools and any other uh, projects, that they are part of the larger vision for the city. Um, and not just one-off expenses um, at, at various whims, so that's, that's where I'm at, um, thank you.
Thank you so much, Valerie, we're gonna move on to the next item. Presentation of minutes, um, our wonderful city clerk Melissa Stan will present the minutes uh, for June eighteen, twenty twenty-four. For the special legislation public hearing and work section minutes for the mayor and council. And Meli, I thank you so much for get us like in a hundred percent on track, as you guys can tell. Once this minutes get voted on for uh, June eighteen. That means like all of our minutes for twenty twenty-four have been completed, voted and approved on, okay? And we have at least, it said three years back, Meli, or, or further that you guys went back and um. Make sure all the minutes were accounted for and voted on. Meli, do you remember, or Mr. Kamali?
Since twenty, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, twenty, so we have five years, so when we said that we've been working hard and making sure the infrastructure of the city gets to work. This is exactly what we mean, sometimes we have to backpedal and get to work on some things that we needed to adjust. But we have them and we're very happy to have our, you know, city manager, clerk, making sure the documents are accounted for, so that way. Um, when they do audits, they could pull the minutes and approvals and this is the reason why we're trying to make sure we follow through, so. It's in your pockets, review them and you know the process. Um, basically let Meli know there's something that needs to be adjusted, now they'll be up for voting on the next um, legislative meeting. So now we vote on approval of minutes for June four legislative meeting, can I have a motion on the floor? Do you approve?
So moved.
Second.
Probably move in second in discussion, objection, extension, hearing none. We are moving to item number thirteen, now without for saying, um, don't forget Mount Rainier Day. The redo is this Saturday, we have a wonderful parade, a lot of um. A lot of vendors, community organizations, information. And for a first year in a long time, I don't know if it's ever been done, I think maybe at one point it was done at the nature center. We have joint forces and we are gonna be hosting it at the nature center. The parade route is gonna be the same, this also a reminder that um. Days before signs are gonna go up for the day of um, Mount Rainier Day for the parade, please do not have any vehicles. On the streets because they are gonna be relocated for the safety of the people that are in the parade. Okay, so we will see you at the nature center, rain shine, we will be there and um. We've been having quite a few meetings and we're very excited to see you guys there, so in saying that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there probably move in second in discussion, objection, extension, hearing none. This meeting comes to an end and I'll take a special moment privileged to wish my mother a happy birthday, you know, my big mom. Um, the other Selena, right, um, it's her birthday, so happy birthday, mom, she's like blasting my phone, like, how come I haven't called her back? Alright, so have a good night, everybody, thank you, uh, the whole entire staff uh, for your help and for being wonderful to all of us, alright? See you guys around and I'll see uh, you guys on Saturday, um, and the whole month of September. Plenty of fun and activities coming through and the whole team has gotten together to bring. And continue bringing the best of our community out, alright, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Stan.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.